Let me call this meeting to order. It is now 6:30, the regular scheduled board meeting for the month of September 12, 2017. Determination, we have a quorum. Ms. Letizia Lopez?
Present.
Mr. Eduardo Ramirez?
Present.
Ms. Judy Solis?
Present.
Mr. Elizar Velazquez?
Present.
And myself, Daniel Garcia is present as well. We do have a quorum. The pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Section three, approval of minutes for the special board meeting on August 8th, 2017, the regular board meeting on August 15th, 2017, the public meeting for August 29th, 2017, and the special board meeting on August 29th, 2017. Do we have a motion for the approval of minutes?
I so move.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Public forum. Item one, student recognition, 2017 RGV summer track. It's Mr. Guillermo Ruiz, Jose G. Morales, Isiquiel Lopez, and Omar Careno.
Omar Careno.
Item two, consider and take possible action on request for use of school facilities from the City of Rio Grande City Peewee Football League for October 7th, 2017 through December 16th, 2017, various campuses.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent Garcia. Ladies and gentlemen, attached is the request of the City of Rio Grande City for the use of various campuses for the Peewee Football League, starting in the month of October 7th through December 16th. The administration recommends approval of the request to use the facilities.
Do we have a new discussion item two? Do we have a motion item two?
I so move.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item three, consider and take possible action on request for use of school facilities from the City of Rio Grande City Adult Basketball League for September 9th, 2017 through October 28th, 2017, Ramiro Viegas Gym.
Again, attached is the request for the City of Rio Grande City for the use of Ramiro Viegas Gym for the 2017 Adult Basketball League, starting, and we have a typo here, Mr. Chair. Instead of October, it should be September 9th through October 28th. September 9th through October 28th.
All right. Do we have a motion, item three?
Our, our, our actually reads, has those dates, so I think it's been corrected.
Yes, the attachment reads the correct, the correct date.
I move that we approve item three as presented.
Yes, your attachment does.
Motion by Mr. Ramirez, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And if we can go back to item one, I did see more students walk in. I know Mr. Sines, one of their coach, their coach did come in. We did call that item already, Mr. Sines, if you want to come up. So I think Mr. Garcia recognized the kids that just arrived.
Yes, please.
If you want to introduce them, Mr. Sines?
Okay, let me introduce, starting from the smallest to the biggest. First, our youngest runner this year, Mr. Omar Careno Jr., seven years old. He competed at the regional, state, and at the national meet, and every single time that he ran at the last meet, is the best thing about all these guys, they all ran their best times at the very end, which is very hard to do when you, when you run and you compete at the state level, and then you still have another week of training, and they still did good. Second, ten-year-old, Mr. Ezequiel Lopez, also competed regionals, also at the state meet and national, and he came back and improved tremendously at the state meet, and he fixed what he, we had been working at in, at, in practice. When he did that, he made a huge improvement, and he not only won at the national meet, but he dominated, and it was a great accomplishment from, from him. Both of these two kids go to Dr., I mean, Dr. Ramirez Elementary School. Next one. I'll start with Mr., he's my neighbor, and he, he went to this school, elementary school, and Mr. Guillermo Ruiz, he's only a sixth grader, but he's competing on the division in what has been driving him, that he always looks up to Jose Morales, and what Jose Morales started after two years, now these three boys have really picked it up and have taken it to a huge level, which I will tell you in a little while. Guillermo Ruiz also competed at the regional, state, and at the national meet, and his best times were also at state and national meet. Congratulations. And of course, you guys know from two years ago, it's a great thing when somebody like Steven Sines started something great in the shot in the discus. Now finally, we were getting something that they never thought that we could run against, you know, at the national level. So these four boys, so that you guys can understand how big this was, if these boys would be at the same age, age level, running with people all over the United States, they would be representing you guys for the United States at the Olympics. So that's one heck of an accomplishment for all four of these boys. And also, it's a great thing that, like I, like I mentioned earlier, Jose started it. Not only did this catch fire here in Rio Grande, it also caught fire in, in the valley. It made believers in people from us, from here, from the valley, that we can run against anybody around, not, not only here in Texas, but at the national level. There was quite a bit of kids that because of, that Jose made them believe that if they work hard enough, and they want something, and they, they continue working at it, this has been a great, successful year for them, and also for a lot of kids from the valley. And I want to thank him and thank you guys for giving me this opportunity, and giving all, these boys an opportunity to practice and work hard, and by golly, they worked very hard the whole year. I want to thank Jose Morales and all these four boys. I want to tell you a little bit about their races. The youngest one, Mr. Omar Careno, he competed in the 400, 800, and, and the 200, but at the national meet, he did the 400 and the 800. He came in second in, in the 400, and he is the national champions here in the USA in the 800, Mr. Omar Careno. Next, I want to, Ezequiel Lopez, he competed also in the 800. They also have the mile. Once you go up to the ten-year-olds, it goes up to the mile, and then as you go older, they'll have the two mile. Ezequiel got third in the, at state in the, in the mile, and I asked the guys, oh, we're traveling 2,000 miles, is there a possibility that our boys can compete in more events? Just he had a bad day at the state meet, and he said, what was his time at his regional meet? So I gave him the time, he said, sure, and he did us a favor for all of us, for all these guys, and these guys did not let you down. These guys took that opportunity that they gave them, and they, they won it in great fashion. So as a kid who won the 800 and the, the mile, which is the 1,500 over there, both of them, he's national champ. And now I'll go to my neighbor, Graviel, I mean, Guillermo Ruiz. I'm a little nervous, it's just that we were in a hurry of get, trying to get here. He also competed at, at the regional and state meet, and at the national meet, he, I also asked him, he sacrificed his races, his individual race, to, to try to make it in the mile and, and, and the sprint relay, which we came out third. And I asked him, can he run an individual race? He said, I tell you what, since there's five events, I want to let you, let him run five events, if he's not, if he's not in the, in field events. I said, thank you very much. So I spoke to him, you guys have been working very hard, you guys are capable of running five events in two days, and he didn't let us down. He came in fourth in the 100 at the national meet, he came in third in the, in the three, in the 400, he came in third in the 200, of course, he is part of the national champion sprint relay, and part of the national champion mile relay, at the 11 and 12-year-old. Next is Jose Morales. He is the one that started everything. He would have been national champ, guys, two years ago, but we didn't have the resources to go, and it caught me off guard when, when we decided, actually, we didn't think, he improved so much from the regional meet to the state meet, that we were not expecting him to win state in that fashion and breaking, he broke records at the state meet. And so this year, we're prepared, and thanks to some good people in, in our town, in Edinburgh, that helped us finance, and Mr. Ruiz also helped us finance the, the trip to over there and drive, made it possible for all these guys to go over there. Jose Morales won the 800 and the 400 as a, as a national champ this year, and he's part of the sprint relay and the mile relay, which also came in first at the national meet. So I want to thank you guys for this opportunity, and, and these boys for a wonderful year representing Rio Grande City.
Boys, on behalf of the school board and my superintendent, I want to thank you all very much for presenting the district so well, out there in the competition, the community and the rest of the, of the people here in the district. We do appreciate all that you do. To the parents, thank you all so much for your support and your efforts, and this has just been proved that RGCCISD is the place to be. Thank you all very much.
Item four, consider and take possible action on request for use of school facilities from the McLevy Conception School for volleyball and basketball games, Veterans Middle School.
Attached is the letter and schedule from Ms. Olivares, Maria Elena Olivares, principal at AMC, for the use of the gym for the boys and girls volleyball and basketball games. Attached, you have a game schedule, in which ICS will work around the districts, scheduled, already approved for this year. We're requesting that we approve the request.
Do we have a motion, item four?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Lopez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item five, consider and take possible action on donations to RGCCISD.
The following donations have been received by the district. We have three for this particular board meeting. We have RGCCISD, the chairman of the board, we got donated two flags, US and the Texas flag, by Mr. AC Heating and Cooling. We also got third grade students, 4,305 and 60 cents on dictionaries, I believe it was 1,200 dictionaries for third graders. We got a call from Peter Piper People last week, the name of the marketing representative was Ms. Christina Sines, and all she wanted to know is, will we accept their donation? And I said, of course we would, so they were shipped to the warehouse, and then from there, we had Mr. Lupito Garza distribute to all their grade campuses. We recommend the approval of the donations. And finally, we have also Alto Bonito Elementary with a Red Robin donation, I believe, by the Kula Foundation for $4.69.
Do we have a motion, item five?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Velazquez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item six, consider and take possible action on pay application number two to Armin Antonio Solis Construction for Gree Elementary Project.
Attached is the pay application number two for the Gree Elementary Project bus drop-off area. The total pay for the application is $89, $4.91 with 15 cents to Armin Antonio Solis Construction. We recommend approval for application number two.
Discussion item six?
I'm wondering how that, that's going, how?
Right now, Ms. Lopez, it's at about, I believe, your attachment is there, and the request, I believe it's at about a 54% complete, so they, they're doing well. The, the target area is October, this coming next month, to be hopefully out of there, weather permitting, so that's, that's what's at, and this is just the second application request.
Any more discussion, item six? Do we have a motion, item six?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Velazquez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item seven, consider and take possible action on TASB Risk Management Unemployment Compensation Agreement for the 2017-2018 school year.
The RGCCISD participates in the TASB Risk Management Unemployment Compensation Program for reporting purposes, compensation. In essence, we are self-funded, as opposed to paying a flat tax rate, as other employees do. Our contributions are based on unemployment claims paid on our account. This agreement automatically renew each year, however, we are requesting board approval for this year. To our knowledge, this is the only organization to perform this service for school districts. We recommend approval to participate in the unemployment compensation program.
Any discussion, item seven? Do we have a motion, item seven?
I so move.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item eight, consider and take possible action on tax refund for the month of August 2017.
Presented is a request for the approval of tax refunds for August 2017. Refunds totaling $6,043.69 being requested. You have the attachment and the summary of the refunds. If there's anybody with any questions, we recommend approval of the tax refunds for the amount of $6,043.69.
All right, we have a motion on item eight?
I so move.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item nine, consider and take possible action on requisitions, $5,000 and over in a total month aggregate.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Garcia. We do have requisitions for your consideration, starting on page 62 of your agenda. There's proper funding, or if funding is available for all these requests. I don't know if you have any particular questions, or any questions on, on these items, but we're bringing them for your consideration.
Any discussion, item nine? Do we have a motion, item nine?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 10, consider and take possible action on request for permission to submit, thank you, Mr. President, a certification waiver and proposed plan for superintendent to the Texas Education Agency.
Mr. Board President, members of the board, superintendent of schools, Mr. Garcia. On item 10, we respectfully ask permission to submit waiver and proposed plan to the Texas Education Agency for the superintendent certification waiver. Attached in the plan are three major components. We have the TIA Required Actions, which were found in the school year of 2016-2017. There is a needs assessment also outlined by the state in the school year 26-2017, and the 2017-2018 District Improvement Plan, which is a draft at this point. Those are the items we request, respectfully request permission to submit.
Any discussion, item 10?
I, I just feel you, you received a waiver for a whole year.
A permit.
A permit, and that was to get your certification? I just feel that, that a three-year waiver, when we have, we have other people with, with already certified as a superintendency, I feel that if we're expecting that from the teachers to be certified, our counselors, our assistant principals, and our principals, we should expect our, our superintendent to also have that certification. You weren't given the opportunity, and I just, I just feel that our, our district should just have that high expectations, but that's just what I feel.
Now, there's waivers for a year, correct?
We asked for the three-year permit.
Okay. It amazes me that how, when it comes to other positions, they don't want disruption, and we're asking for another year for, for our superintendent to do what he has to do, he becomes proud of. So I respectfully disagree with Mrs. Lopez, but the waiver would be for one year, is that correct?
The application, sir, we, we plan to ask for a three-year, and the second component to an application would be, at what point do you feel that the requisites or certifications will be reached? We ask for the end of 2018.
Any more discussion, item 10? Do we have a motion, item 10?
I move to approve this item as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Velazquez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion, motion carries with Ms. Lopez opposing item 10. Item 11, consider and take possible, item 11, consider and take possible action on pay grades, teacher pay scale for the 2017-2018 school year.
Mr. President, item 11, respectfully submit approval for the 2017-2018 Administrative Auxiliary and Paraprofessional Pay Grades, also with a teacher pay scale. These are for new hires. Attached, you see the teacher pay scale and all administrative paras and auxiliary pay grades. Administration recommends approval. This was presented to policy and personnel committees, September 6th, 2017.
Do we have a, any discussion, item 11? Do we have a motion, item 11?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Velazquez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 12, consider and take possible action on Texas Teacher Evaluation Support System Evaluation Timeline for the 2017-2018 school year.
Yes, sir. On item 12, we respectfully submit for approval for the T-Test. T-Test is the appraisal instrument used for teachers, and this is a timeline to, to guide us as far as the appraisal instrument will be implemented. This item was presented to personnel and policy committees. Administration recommends approval of the T-Test timeline.
All right, any discussion, item 12? Do we have a motion, item 12?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 13, consider and take possible action on Texas Principal Evaluation Support System Timeline for the 2017-2018 school year.
The T-PES instrument is used for our principals and assistant principals. They're also similar to what we just passed in the previous item, we're asking for approval, respectfully asking for approval for the T-PES timeline, for the instrument used for principals and assistant principals. Administration recommends approval, and this item was also presented to personnel and policy committees.
Do we have a motion, item 13?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Velazquez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 14, consider and take possible action on administrator appraisal list for the 2017-2018 school year.
On item 14, Mr. Garcia, respectfully seek approval for the T-PES and non-T-PES appraisal list. These administrate, list of administrators would be appraising principal, assistant principals, and non-assistant principals and principals. Attached, you see the list on your packet. This was also presented to policy and personnel committees, and administration recommends approval.
Do we have a motion, item 14?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 15, consider and take possible action on Texas Teacher Evaluation Support System Evaluation List for the 2017-2018 school year.
I'm sorry, that was item 15?
15.
15. Okay, on the item 15, we have the teacher, T-Test Evaluation List. This is a, the exhibit under DNA. DNA governs the T-Test appraisal instrument, and there's two parts to the exhibit that we're seeking approval today. One is, teachers can apply with the campus principal for breaking up the 45-minute mandated observation, and that's what you see on the first exhibit. And the second part of the exhibit are all the assistant principals and principals listed as appraisers for the T-Test instrument. This was also presented to personnel and policy committees, and administration recommends approval.
Do we have a motion, item 15?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Velazquez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 16, consider and take possible action on TASB Localized Updates 108.
On update 108, sir, we received updates from the state, from TASB Texas Association of School Boards, and for the record, it's EF Local, EFA Local, EFAA Local, EHDB Local, EIF Local, EL Local, and GKB Local. All these updates are presented from TASB. Administration recommends approval, and these updates were presented to policy and personnel committees on September 4th.
Do we have a motion, item 16?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 17, consider and take possible action on extension of contract agreement between York Risk Service Group Incorporated and RGCCISD for workers' compensation for the 2017-2018 school year.
Our current contract's set to expire September 30th of this month. On this, you see the attached contract from York Services. This was approved and looked, reviewed and approved by our local legal. It was also presented to insurance committee yesterday. This extension would go from October 1st, 2017 to September 30th, 2018. Administration recommends approval.
Do we have a motion, item 17?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have, we have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 18, consider and take possible action on graduation gown for early college high school senior class.
Good evening, Mr. Daniel Garcia, Board President, members of the board, Mr. Garcia, community members. On behalf of the early college preparatory for early college high school and the district, the early college students have selected or are recommending for your approval their cap, their gown, when and there's a cap in your packet that goes with the gown for their graduating class for this coming year, for the first class of 17-18, the senior class. It's maroon, and it's got, you know, their, their crest and their little 17 for the, there's no cost to the district, the students want it, your approval.
Love the maroon.
I'm not sold on the maroon.
Love the maroon. Kudos to the kids for choosing maroon. Thank you. Please pass that along.
I'm not sold on the maroon.
We could do half and half. Mr. Smedley and I approve.
So, the district recommends approval.
So, the district recommends approval.
All right.
I move to approve this item.
We have a motion on item eighteen by Ms. Solis, do we have a second? We have a second by Ms. Lopez, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item nineteen, consider and take possible action on La Coseca Dual Language Conference in Albuquerque, New Mexico on November first through the fourth, 2017.
Good evening, Mr. Daniel Garcia, Board President, members of the board, Mr. Alfredo Garcia, Superintendent of Schools. La Coseca is the largest bilingual dual-language conference in the nation. This year is going to take place from in Albuquerque, New Mexico, from October the first through the fourth. They're gonna have over two hundred and forty professional presentations and workshops, along with, not only for the one-way immersion dual-language program, but also for the bilingual programs. And also, it would include sessions on shelter instruction, which is the SIOP, as well as leadership development and other emerging bilingual communities. The bilingual department is requesting permission for six district employees to attend on those days. The total cost is about eight thousand dollars, that includes everything, that includes a conference registration, hotel, flight, rental car and meals. So, we respectfully request approval, as presented at the curriculum meeting.
Do we have a motion on item nineteen?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Velazquez, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twenty, consider and take possible action on staff development proposal for EEL Leadership Academy for the 2017-2018 school year.
The English Language Learners Leadership Academy is offered through Region One, through the bilingual department, and it's for instructional leaders, that's so that they can develop a deep understanding of the ELL issues to ensure the academic, linguistic and effective success of this growing population. The ELL Leadership Academy is designed as a transformational series of activities and experiences to empower district and campus leaders in closing achievement equity gaps. This is a six-day academy, starting with September twenty-nine, that would be the first day, then October twenty-seven. I do wanna make a correction because I, at the curriculum meeting, I had said December fifteen, but it is November seventeen. That would be the third day, January the eighth, February the sixteenth and March the twenty-third will be the other day. Three of those days are during our staff development, so that way, you know, it will not affect the the campus administrators that will be participating. It is for twenty-one people. Total cost is fifteen thousand seven hundred and fifty, is seven hundred and fifty per participant. They cannot miss any of the six-day session, and it's for administrators. Many times, we train the teachers, but the title, three grant, also requires that administrators be trained. And just very quickly, the topics will be second language acquisition, Telpass and the Elps connection, ELL accountability and data analysis, PIMS coding, ELLs of populations, ALPAC procedures, and many other things that the bilingual director from Region One is going to cover. So, we respectfully request approval, and funding is available through two sixty-three.
Sir, this is for elementary and secondary?
This will be for one administrator per campus, so it would be all the elementaries and then one administrator from the secondary schools.
Do we have a motion on item twenty? We have a motion by Ms. Solis, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, my Mr. Velazquez, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-one, consider and take possible action on request for permission to purchase mobile cards and laptops for ELL elementary students.
Yes, sir, on this item, the bilingual ESL department is seeking permission to purchase mobile cards and laptops for the ELL elementary students to properly implement the two programs that we have in place, which is Imagine Learning and the I Station. As you all know, as if you recall, the I Station for grade skinder first and second, they have to utilize the computer labs because we have to submit that data to the state. But we also have the Imagine Learning Program that, you know, it was an expensive program and it needs to be utilized as well. So, with the purchase of these laptops and mobile cards, they would be utilized in the classroom for those grade levels. In addition to that, this year, we do have to test Telpass online, not only for reading, but also listening and speaking, that is new. So, with the purchase of these devices, we would, the elementaries campuses will have extra devices for during the testing of Telpass. The total cost for this, it will be a hundred and ninety-nine thousand six hundred and eleven with sixty cents. The company that was recommended by our technology department is First Service Technology, and the funding is available through one ninety-nine, which is the state bilingual and SCE. So, we respectfully request the permission, approval.
Do we have a motion, item twenty-one?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, my Mr. Ramirez, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. Item twenty-two, consider and take possible action on request for permission to advertise for after-school centers in education for the 2017-2018 school year to Texas ACE Program Site Coordinators and one Family Engagement Specialist.
Good afternoon, Mr. Board President, respective members of the board, Mr. Alfredo Garcia and the audience. Once again, this is our last year for Cycle Eight, Year Five, for the ACE Program, which is written only for Gruia Middle and Gruia High School, and I'm asking to advertise, it is not a a secure job because it is a grant, it is our last year for one ACE Coordinator for Gruia Middle, for Gruia High, and one Family Engagement Specialist. The fee is there, what the cost will be for the family engagement is forty-five thousand, and for each coordinator will be fifty thousand, and will be prorated because we're already starting late. It will be funded through the ACE Twenty-First Century Grant.
Any discussion item twenty-two? Do we have a motion item twenty-two?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, my Mr. Ramirez, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-three, consider and take possible action on request for permission to advertise for part-time positions for the after-school centers in education for Gruia Middle School and Gruia High School for the 2017-2018 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Board President, going back to the grant, this year, we have obviously new principals in each of these schools, and their emphasis, of course, is academic recognition and improvement, so we did it a little bit different with their consultation, and the emphasis will be on academics. So, they requested the following academic teachers to stay after school and start as soon as possible to improve their grades in reference to the STAR test, and of course, to improve our academic achievement throughout Region One. So, the following are there, they're listed there with you for Gruia Middle School and Gruia High School. We do have a couple of enrichment, but the emphasis is more on academics. And I know that we're gonna start tutorials, but not till after the first six weeks, so we have to know how the students do in the benchmark. So, we're asking to start as soon as possible.
Do we have a motion item twenty-three?
I would move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, my Mr. Velazquez, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item twenty-four, consider and take possible action on RGCCISD Social Studies STAR for migrant program.
Good evening, Mr. Garcia, Board President, members of the board, Mr. Garcia Superintendent, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Veronica Garcia, and I'm the migrant program coordinator. I'm representing Ms. Virginia Gonzalez, our federal program director. We're asking approval for college-first social studies camp for eighth-grade migrant students. This implementation plan has been customized to serve the needs of Rio Grande CDCISD migrant students and parents based on the feedback received from Central Office Administration to go above and above and beyond preparing eighth-grade students for the social studies STAR test content. The outcomes of this implementation plan have been aligned to achieve school district goals. The college-first program implementation model offers a one-of-a-kind academic enrichment curriculum, instructional framework and facilitation strategies to give Rio Grande CDCISD migrant students the ultimate STAR social studies test preparation experience. We will be servicing approximately a hundred migrant students. The total cost of this program is twenty-four thousand eight hundred, and we will be funded through Title One, Part C migrant grant to twelve. We do have appropriate funding, we request approval.
Do we have a motion, an item twenty-four?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, my Mr. Velazquez, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-five, consider and take possible action on RGCCISD College First STEM Camp for migrant program.
The elementary migrant camp program is designed to implement the Science STAR test camps exclusively for our third through fifth grade migrant elementary students. All camps are one-of-a-kind events designed with exclusive academic enrichment activities, facilitation strategies and mentorship experiences to address the specific educational needs of our migrant students, going above and beyond traditional learning in the classroom to prepare them to succeed succeed in the STAR test. We'll be servicing approximately two hundred students. The total cost of this program will be fifty-five thousand eight hundred and will be funded through Title One, Part C migrant grant to twelve. We do have appropriate funding, we request approval.
Do we have a motion on item twenty-five?
I would move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, my Mr. Velazquez, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-six, consider and take
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Action on STC Memorandum of Understanding Between STC and RGCCISD for Continuing Education Employability Skills Cake Decorating for the 2017-2018 school year.
Good evening. Special Education Department is seeking to enhance the post-graduation career opportunities for our students with disabilities. We are seeking to provide the skills necessary for their post-secondary graduation through a partnership with South Texas College to train our own special ed teachers on basics, cake decorating, employability skills and customer service. The funding source for this project is through the one ninety-nine general fund, through special education. There is the monies for this particular project, we do recommend approval.
Do we have a motion, item twenty-six?
I would move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, my Mr. Ramirez, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anything on reports and information? It is now seven twelve, it will be heading to under into closed session under the authority of the Texas Government Code Section five-five-one point oh-seven-one. It is now seven thirty-six, we're out of executive. Item A, I believe, regards no action. Item B, do we have a motion, item B?
I move to approve item B as discussed in a secondary session.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez, do we have a second? We have a second, my Ms. Solis, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item C, do we have a motion, item C?
I move to approve item C as discussed in a secondary session.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez on item C, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, my Ms. Solis, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item D, do we have a motion, item D?
I move to approve item D as discussed in a secondary session.
Do we have a motion by Mr. Ramirez on item D, do we have a second? We have a second, my Ms. Solis, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item E, do we have a motion, item E?
I move to approve item E as discussed in a secondary session.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, my Ms. Solis, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item F, do we need a table or any action?
No action.
No action. Item G, no action, and do we have a motion for adjournment? We have a motion by Ms. Solis, we have a second, my Mr. Ramirez, meeting is now adjourned, it's seven thirty-seven.